I'm gonna call the July tenth City Council meeting to order. Mr. Ben Hancock, would you please give us some prayer?
You would bow your heads, Mr. Ben. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your kingdom, your power, and your divine glory. We thank you that your spirit leads us and guides us in still places beside still waters and calls us to lie down in green patches. Restore our minds, wills, and emotions to you and to your kingdom and to your word, Lord, and lead us by your holy spirit. Thank you for this great city, this great council, all our employees and citizens that live here. Help unite us, Lord, so that we can work together for unity to build your kingdom on this earth. In Christ's holy name we pray.
Amen.
All right, I just want to remind everyone that our meeting we do by departmental procedures and robust rules of order with the standard for facilitated discussions, group discussions and rules. Departmental reports, we have, if we have any question on the departmental reports or anything to report from the departments. Questions? Any question? All right. Next, we have public comments. Public comments, please understand that the City Council cannot discuss any presented issues, nor can it take any action on any issues at this time, except as a statement of fact, including policy that may be made responsive to an issue. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. We have Bo Lembry.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bo Lembry.
First and foremost, giving honor.
Would you like to come up to the stands so we can hear you, please?
Absolutely. First of all, giving honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, Mr. Mayor, all the council members inside the building. I just want to say as a citizen of Jasper, Texas, some things have been taking place to me, I won't name any names, but I'm gonna name the things that's happened to me that I believe in my heart, my soul, I'm a good man, I'm a fair man, I don't bother anybody. I just came home to retire and relax. I've been blessing others unconditionally for the last four months, I've been on four months. Before I came back home, I lost my home to fire, I don't know why. My car, I got an Audi A8, has been tore up, I don't know why. I'm in harass at storefronts, I don't know why. So many things have happened to me that I don't bother anybody. I'm at church, I get gang about four men, and then five, six, seven, one person, I'm just one person, and why is so many things happening to me? I don't go to nobody's home, I don't go to nobody's place of business, I don't bother anybody. All I ask for is peace, respect, honor, as I give you. I've spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the last four months to others that I don't even know at convenience stores, grocery stores. All I ask is to live alone, let me have peace. I don't come for no kind of harm to anyone, I just want peace from everyone. I love everyone unconditionally. There's not a soul here in Jasper that could say I done something wrong. I defend myself, any means necessary, I just want to live alone, is all I ask, in Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you. We have Brent Mo.
Good evening, folks. I'm here tonight just to clear up a couple of issues that have become political in town regarding a basketball court. I was chairman and headed a downtown revitalization program in two thousand and fourteen, and we discussed multiple venues, multiple ways to improve our downtown. So we can call this basketball court what we want, we can paint the picture we want to see. The reality was, it was approved as a multipurpose facility. It was a project from the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, I believe the city approved. And it was somewhat of a part of the revitalization program of two thousand and fourteen. It's a multipurpose facility, it's called a pavilion, it's an outdoor recreation center under one roof, it's a family children community center, it's a school field trip destination, it's a church field trip destination, it's a volleyball multi-sport court designed and designated for multiple opportunities. It's an outdoor fitness exercise facility, yoga, senior citizens, silver sneakers, call it what you want. It's under roof, it's a stage, it's an arena, it's a small outdoor concert area, it's a movie night in Sandy Creek Park, it's a summer league platform for adjoining communities to join together as a township in our adjoining communities. It's a Sandy Creek Summer Series music venue, it's an extension of our Fall Festival, our Azalea Festival, our Fourth of July, our Christmas in the Park, and anything else anybody wants to bring under an outdoor pavilion. It's an extension of our meetings, it's workshop venues, it's volunteers, it's nonprofits, it's for the community. It's an antique art show, it's an antique car show, it's a food truck festival extension, it's a shade cover, it's a shelter, it's a place to gather, it's a bridge, it's a catcher's net, it's a central depot for this whole park, potentially a hundred acres in the city limits of Jasper, unheard of anywhere in the United States. It's an asset, it's a continued progress, it's not a basketball court. You can compromise, you can take your time, and you can do your math, and if you want to give a refund to the community, make that happen, but don't use this as a political football game. It's a legacy you earned, you entrusted with the citizens, and it's something you guys have a small part to play in leaving your own legacy with this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Debbie, Debbie Barnes Hawkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First giving out to God in council voice, Mary Anne Green. My name is Debbie Barnes, I am a citizen of Jasper. I lived for thirty-two years, but due to the death of my mom, I came back here to care for my grandmother. And my thing today is this, I'm not trying to cause any trouble. But one year, I came to vote, and I was in there looking on the wall at all the different pictures of, you know, this person for this and this person for this, and I looked around and I said, well, why is my mother picture not up here? Anybody knew my mother, she was Betty Adams Owens. My mother was the first African American to run for city council, the first, and she won. But due to her health, she didn't hold her seat. Now, it might not seem a lot to a lot of people, but it does to me. My mother was a good person, she wasn't a perfect person, but she was a good person, and she was a Christian. Jasper, I love Jasper, that's why I'm still here. But we, everybody in here know, we have a lot of negativity about this town. Why we can't have something good about it? It doesn't cost one penny to have a picture of my mother and others put up on that wall in there. Like I say, my mother did a lot, a lot, and I'm not gonna even say anybody in here that knew my mother, they knew that. And I'm not angry about it, but I'm hurt about it. I prayed about it, that's why I'm standing here today. And I was, that's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm standing here to ask. Is there any way, not just my mother, anyone else that's not up there? Would it hurt? Would it cost any money? I'll go to Walmart and get the pictures made, I do it all the time. But I would love to walk in there for somebody that I love dearly, and a lot of people here did, to see her picture, because she did make history. She made, whether she was green, purple, she was an African American. And she walked that walk and she talked that talk. And I'm just, you know, it's, it's a plus, it's a plus for Jasper, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't see one thing wrong with having a picture, like I say, not of just my mother, but when I walk in there and I look and I know what she stood for, and I can't see that, and she made H-I-S-T-O-R-Y with all capital letters. If we would go to any other place, you would see that. And we talk about this town coming together, you have to walk before, you crawl before you walk. And little bitty things like that here, it helps. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Was that it, Karen? No other public comments? Considered for approval, one set of minutes, regular call, City Council meeting, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'm making a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there any discussion? Okay, motion passed. Considered for approval, City of Jasper's second quarter investment report.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion been made in the second, do we have any discussion on it? Motion been made in second, all in favor? All opposed? Item three, considered for approval, request for the Texas, join the Texas Communities Group LLC, who will work with our delinquent tax properties to get them back on the tax roll and to approve work contracts and work statements if council approves the request.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion's been made in second, any discussion?
Guess I have a discussion.
Yes. Councilman Sample.
Is this for, uh, delinquent taxes collector, or what is this for?
Can I speak?
Yes, you may.
This is for, in addition to, we use produce that collects, help us collect our delinquent taxes, but this group comes in and works in conjunction with produce that will go to the properties that are delinquent, look to see what status they are in, if they're built, if they're really dilapidated buildings or whatever, or need to be destroyed, or we can put them on, and they group them together, make them quicker to go to a tax sale and get them back on our tax roll quicker than having to deal with them on an individual basis.
Is that it? Okay, we have a motion that's been made in second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item four, considered for approval, following recommendation from Mayor Anderson, keeping consistent with the precedence of appointing of current mayor of the City of Jasper as a representative to the SRMPA board. That being said, we had the last five mayors that were appointed, all the way from Mayor R.C. Horn all the way up to current past mayor. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Can I amend your motion to do nominations like we've done in the past? Nope.
Motion been made in second, all in favor? Say aye. You have two ayes, all opposed?
No.
No, I hear two noes. You said no? We have three noes, motion fails. Item five, considered for approval, spending one million dollars, five hundred dollars each month, August is historically the hottest month of the year, and February historically the coldest month of the year, to reduce the electrical rates to our residential and commercial customers providing funds from SRMPA are available. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for that, but I'd like to amend it, we had talked about this the other day about discussing the workshop, and I don't know that we're gonna get to that point, but last year we had dropped our utility, our twenty-one, we dropped our utility rates, and then also we went back and dropped our property taxes. I'd like to utilize these funds towards applicable property tax, what happens every month, not just two months, and I would like to cut our property tax from the current rate of twenty-five cents, I'd like to reduce it down to about a nickel per hundred, and I also would like to include an additional exemption amount for residential properties, an additional forty thousand dollars off the property tax.
I think that that's something that we should, we should reconsider, I think so that that sounds good, but I think that we need to, as a council, need to have a meeting and discuss that, have a workshop on that.
I think it is your motion.
So, so the motion that I made is to utilize this fund for that workshop.
But that's not what the, I understand what you're saying, you want to amend the motion a tier. You want to amend the.
Well, I still want to use the funds, those are usual tax bases, and, and reduce the tax rate by eighty percent on the current payings.
Did you elaborate on that, Denise?
We worked on this last year.
I'm asking the city manager and the city finance director about this.
I mean, I think this is doable, but I do think that you want you, like you need to afford to do the, with that workshop.
Okay, I think that we should do that before we, before we go into that. We are going to. So what we're gonna, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a workshop on this, we will revisit this and bring this back, once we get all these numbers together, according to the city manager and the city finance director, we will revisit this. We will bring this back.
Can I restate my motion, sir?
Sure you can.
The, the motion that I made was to utilize the funds that were set aside and utilize it for property tax. We were working on this last year, and it would encompass not only property tax, also we talked about reducing our tax rate down to a nickel, it's currently at a quarter, and raising the allowable amount people could take for an exemption by forty thousand dollars, so your property tax will go down, and it will affect you for the year, for every month of the year, instead of just two.
Like I said, I feel as though, I understand your motion, but I said, I feel as though that we should meet with the city finance director.
What can I?
I think we should meet with the city finance director and, and have a workshop on this to make sure that we all are on the same page with these numbers, not just what you're saying, that's what I'm going to do.
Does his motion stand, or it doesn't?
It hasn't been seconded.
If I second it?
Well, I mean.
It's the same money.
I second it if it's a live motion.
Well, I would say that since it's such a different motion that was printed on the agenda.
Correct.
I would say that the workshop is what you basically need for, to deal with it now. If you want to go ahead and go forward with it, what is your motion?
To utilize these funds towards tax reduction instead of electric reduction.
But it's not to approve what's there.
I think he, what he's saying, I mean, it's not true.
So what he's saying is, what the city attorney's saying is, you're not considering for approval the motion that's on the, that's on the agenda, you want to change the agenda item, but the city attorney was saying that, he was saying that we should have the workshop and then bring it back, and if you want to put a, an agenda item on it, change it to what you want to put it on, not change what's here now.
I, I used the same funding that was there, I used the same funding that was there, announced it for residential, with the addition of the forty thousand dollars and the reduction of tax rate, all those tied together, we talked about this workshop last year.
But we didn't do the workshop. So I think we need to do the workshop.
I got a motion in the second.
I think we need to do a workshop.
I, I think also that you need to take into consideration the recent bill that was passed in Austin that increases the exemption, the homestead exemption, up to a million dollars.
I, I think it's a hundred thousand on school.
Can you hear me?
I, I just think that, you know, what you need to do is, you need to follow the agenda item, but also take into consideration that Texas legislation just passed a homestead exemption up to a million dollars for tax purposes, I guess that would be for state and county taxes, and, you know, I mean, taxpayers are gonna get that credit, and if you want to use this money, this one million dollars each year, instead of reducing the utility rate in February and September, I believe, is that?
February and August.
August. You know, it, it's really up to the council to decide that, but I'm just saying that the state is trying to give you a reduction in your homestead exemption, and taking this million dollars every year and applying it to utilities would benefit everybody. That's just my opinion, I'm just, I'm saying that, you know, to apply to a tax rate, reduce it down, I understand what you're, David, I understand what you're saying about reducing it down from twenty-five cents to a nickel, that's fine. And you, you still can do that.
Sure.
But I'm just saying that the, the money that would benefit people the most would be towards their utilities.
It would have a big impact on taxpayers, they put on utilities, because the majority of them go to commercial.
David, David, I understand that you, you didn't make a motion on the item that was on the agenda.
I did make a motion.
No, you did, you changed. You changed the item on the agenda, all I'm saying is, this is not what the motion was on, but all I'm asking is, I'm not saying I don't want to do what you want to do, but I'm saying that everybody up here is not really aware of what you're saying, so that's why I would like to go with the recommendation of the city finance director, for us to have a workshop, we can get all those together, and then you can bring that back and word it the way you want to, and we can do it that way. Sure, you can ask Mike a question.
Mike, do you have a motion in the second that you voted on?
Well, I mean, that's up to the mayor, you know, you've got a motion and a second to vote on a new agenda item.
It's not a new, it's the same one, I think.
It's not the same one.
We got a motion and a second, do we vote or not?
It's not the same item.
I made it, yeah, it was there.
You can't just amend it, it's on the agenda. You just want to change it. You can't just change the agenda item, council.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't change it, I checked the dollar amount later, I just said that you, after the workshop, you utilized the taxes, that's if you will.
Like I said, if you would like to, we'll have a workshop on that with the city finance director, I don't have a problem with that.
That's perfectly, I asked you if we got a motion.
I have already made.
Okay, well, I mean, if you've got a motion in the second on an amended item that was not part of the agenda.
I asked you if you had a motion second you voted on.
Yeah, but it's not on the item, it's on the agenda. You didn't read the item, you, you changed it, well, you changed the wording of the item that was on the agenda. You didn't, you didn't make a motion on what was on the agenda, that's why I said if you wanted to change it. You made a motion to change the agenda item. The item on the agenda is to give the money back to the people for their utility rates, not for what you're talking about. If you want to do that, David, I recommend right now that you write that up, put it on next month's agenda, or I have a special call, I mean, after we meet with the city finance director.
All right.
So we're moving on.
On, on item number five, since, since the wording's not correct, I want to amend my motion to table this till after we've had our budget workshop, and we'll address this at that time to make sure there's no confusion on anybody's part.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item six, considered for approval, council not to approve spending any SRMPA funds for each budget year unless a million dollars have been allocated for the reduction of the electric rate, providing funds, the funds are available. So that means when we have our budget workshops, that means that we allow the first million dollars will be, go back to the SRMPA, from the SRMPA funds will go toward the electric rate.
And make a motion on that, if we leave it as it currently is, the council has control of funds at any time, not just at the budget year, and it can be used for reduction of electrical rates or anything that would be needed at that time.
Just changing again. You just changed another item. You, you just, you just changed another agenda item. Leave it like it is unless you vote on it, and then if you decide you want to do that, you're just gonna change the item. Okay, so now we have a, we need a motion?
I made a motion not to change the work.
So you're saying, so you're saying keep it the same every year?
Keep it the way it is?
Keep it the way it is?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it, but you're saying keep it at the end, right?
Any discussion?
So, so you understood what I said?
I understood what you said. I understood what you said. You said you don't want to change it.
Correct.
But you want to keep the money to where we have control over the spending, council has control over the spending, you understand?
Anytime, yes.
Anytime, okay, that works. We have a motion and a second, I'll agree with that. You seconded, we have a motion and a second, do we have, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have four yeses and one no. Considered for approval, request from council member Ron South, not to build a proposed basketball pavilion by spending one million dollars of funds from SRMPA to counsel the construction of the basketball pavilion, and use that one million dollars to go back to the utility customers of the City of Jasper to help reduce the utility rates. Number two, requesting a record of all funds received from, spent from the SRMPA and get a balance of what we have left, and consider not spending any SRMP funds until council on sample has had a chance to review the records.
So, on number one, I'd propose a motion to leave the pavilion approved as it was twice already, and on number two, access to those funds are literally in our book in front of us, as well as any history, it's public information, we, we don't have to vote on that for him to have access to it.
Okay, this is what I'm gonna do, and this is how this is gonna work, okay? The item has been read as on the agenda, you have a motion and a second on that item, and if you don't want to vote, vote, if you vote no, if you're gonna vote for it, you vote yes, that's the way to do it, if you want to change, put it on the agenda for the next month. That's how that's gonna go. So, now, we have a motion, we have a motion on that? Okay, yes, we have a motion with councilman sample, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, we have, I understand what you're saying, David, I understand what you're going through. So now, do we have, all in favor say aye? We have two ayes and a opposed? Okay, we have one? Are you here? The question was raised.
Are we voting on show's motion or are we voting on sample's motion? See, that's what I'm asking, so we voting on sample, all right, we do it all again?
No, I'm not doing it over again. I've already done it.
I'm a no.
We have one no?
So we voting on Sam's?
Right.
All right, so if we vote, if we vote on Sam's, I vote no.
So we have three noes and two ye, two yeses, so motion doesn't pass.
Is that one and two, or just?
One and two. Okay, so neither one of them, because I ran them both at the same time. Okay, consider for approval, food truck, food festival, and barbecue cookoff, barbecue, chili barbecue cookoff. September sixteenth for the food truck festival, and October fourteenth for the barbecue and chili cookoff to be held, Sandy Creek Park West, requesting five thousand dollars per festival from the.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. We have any discussion?
Who approved it?
This is what we're voting on right now, to approve.
Okay, I, I do have something else I want to say on that. Excuse me, councilman Sam, do you mind if I speak? Okay. I'd like to, I have the same question as councilman Sam does, as far as hotel occupancy tax use. I understand where the money's coming, he asked where the money's coming from, and I understand this is what we're voting on. So, what I'd like to do is, just so everybody will be clear on this, and if I'm wrong, city manager, please let me know. Beverly Hotty, who's here from the chamber, let me know if I'm incorrect in stating so. Under Texas state law and funding application laws, state law, by law, the state of Texas, the City of Jasper collects hotel occupancy tax from hotel motel and bed and breakfast and ends. Under state law, the revenue from hot, from the hot may be used only directly to promote tourism, the convention, and hotel industry. Chapter three fifty-one of the tax code states that the use of hot funds is limited to convention centers and visitors' information, advertising, solicitations, promotions directly promote tourism in the hotel and convention industry, promotions of arts that directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry, host historical restoration and preservation activities that directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry, sporting events, expenses, sporting event expenses that substantially increase economic activity at hotels. The city policy is that the Jasper Lake Sam Raven area chamber of commerce accepts these applications from groups and businesses whose programs fit into one or more of the above categories. All requests for the funds should be submitted in writing accompanied by the official application by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The application will be reviewed by the Jasper Forward Committee. The applicant may be asked to be present at the meeting to answer any questions regarding the application. Applicants will be notified one week prior to the time and place of review. So, may I ask at this time, was there a application submitted for this event?
There was not.
Eligibility and priority for hotel tax funds. Priority will be given to those events and entities based on their ability to generate overnight visitors in this, excuse me, in the City of Jasper. The amount that you are requesting should not exceed more than twenty-five percent of the gross amount of hotel night revenue that you are predicting that will be created or sustained by your event. If any event will not generate any meaningful hotel night activity, it is not eligible for receipt of hotel occupancy tax forms. So at this time, we do not have an application. All I have is an, an agenda item, and so I'm saying that this is not.
Question.
This is not eligible receipt of hotel occupancy.
Question, Mr. Denise, if we can't pull it from the hot fund, can we pull it from the SRMPA? Well, I amended that we will pull five dollars for each event from the SRMPA.
You can resubmit on the next month, on the next month, but you can't do it now.
I'm, I'm, I'm amended it. I, I'm keeping the same, the same agenda.
You can put it back on the agenda for next month. So if you want to put it back on the agenda for next month, you can do that. I'm just saying, if you want to put it back on the agenda for next month, you can do that. Okay, but the thing is, you can't, you, you're asking, requesting for hot funds. You can't get hot funds. So now, you want to take money from SR, SR, so I have one question now. Who's our sponsor in this, I'm sorry, who's sponsoring this event?
The city.
The city is sponsoring this event?
It's our event. We had it last year. We did the same thing last year.
Who paid for it last year, the hot funds?
The city.
The city.
It's a city event.
No, not the city. The city does, doesn't control the hot funds, the chamber does.
Chamber does.
Does, is that correct, am I wrong?
Well, the city.
Am, am I wrong?
I don't know, what, what you asking?
I'm asking, Denise, I'm just asking, am I, I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me, go ahead, you may speak.
Mayor, the chamber administrates the application process. The city determines how much they're going to allow for the entities to be divided up among them. The chamber does not have a vote. It's the Jasper Forward Committee, which is made up of Denise Kelly, Randall Dally from Jasper County District One, Brenda Jobe at Raven Country, Tammy Wagstaff with the Holiday Inn, and a couple of other chamber members. The chamber does not have a say. It's the city's money, which in turn comes to council in September for a vote on your budget.
Thank you very much. But so, but the thing is, we do not have an application, is that correct? Well, did you receive an application for hot funds for this event?
No, sir.
Okay, so therefore, hot funds cannot be used for this event. If you want to do this, you can put this back on the agenda for next month. Next item, consider for approval, order and signage for no guns in the council room with city hall. Chief.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right. You can put up thirty of six and thirty of seven signage. Since the government entity meets here and forbid anyone from carrying concealed or open carrying weapon in this building, you can also do it for city hall, according to TML, which is their insurance. What I need to know, sign's relatively cheap. All I need to know is, does the council wish to do that? Now, you should know that there is some, uh, groups that are challenging this, so they put it up, and in a month, they're taking it down. They don't have a lot. Whether they appeal, it could be years. But all I need is a yes, you want it, or no, you don't. One way to consider is, depends on which side you look at. If you forbid it, it's not gonna stop Joe Blow from coming in the back door and shooting the place up. The signage will do nothing to it. And everybody in here that is not concealed carrying will be sheep that's slaughtered. On the other hand, if you put up the signage, then you ain't gotta worry about somebody getting their feelings hurt or their temple, uh, temper while they're in here and go to act a nigger. Now, law enforcement will be here, we have our guns regardless. I'm a firm believer in the Second Amendment. I understand some folks may be uncomfortable by someone carrying concealed carry.
Excuse me, excuse me, chief. I, I understand what, but he said, he did say ignorant. That's what he said. He said, excuse me, ma'am, he said ignorant.
What was it?
Councilman Margaret? Did you hear what he said?
He said ignorant.
Okay, thank you.
Are you telling me I'm gonna come up in here acting nigger?
Yeah.
They thought you said something.
I call it like I see it.
It was just, just understanding about the words, you say, you think, without considering something else.
All I need to do is, does the council wish to do this or not?
Okay, can we get a motion on this?
I got a question.
You can do that after discussion, after discussion.
Can I ask you a question? Okay, um, if you put the sign up, right, what is preventing anyone from coming in here? Or you just put like a metal detector at the door, like, not gonna do anything?
And, and of course, council can order metal detectors for the doors and all, but we're not gonna sit out there and want everybody to come in.
It's just that if you do, if anybody does what chief is saying, and you have the signage up, you'll be in violation.
Yeah, then you could go to jail.
Yeah, you could go to jail.
But the signage is not gonna stop somebody that's wanting to come in here. They're gonna come unleaving, they're paying attention to the signage. And like Spiedland said, they put young people, they see them all the time, they, they're still.
Can I ask a question, Gerald? I understand what you're saying, I understand the signage. The, I know a while back, it was pretty predominant in churches that they weren't gonna allow them to have any type of firearm, and churches started getting attacked. For my own benefit, I would prefer to not have a sign. I hope some of y'all are carrying guns, it doesn't bother me, I'm a firm believer in the Second Amendment, so, um, I, I, I just hate to put a sign up there that says we're gonna be victims if you want to come in here.
I don't think that's what that says, because we do have, like, we have the chief here, any, uh, law enforcement that are here that are allowed to carry guns, and that's what they're here for. That, that's just my opinion, you have it?
Sure.
Like I said, this is what y'all want. If I got my gun, it don't matter to me where it is, because I'm gonna have mine.
Okay, so, like I said, consider approval, order and signage, no guns in the council and or city hall. You have a motion? You have a motion on that item? No motion? Thanks, chief. All right, well, now we're going into executive session. The time is six forty-two.